Okay, so y'all here with that guy? Is it hot enough? That's kind of warm. I think we don't amend the agenda right now. Hold it down.
I would like to amend the agenda tonight to add to the Halloween committee. We're going to discuss possibly put together an Halloween committee. And Ms. Martin is here tonight to speak to that. So be very brief, but I think it's important.
Alright, Mike, you want to go?
Okay. First, we have the reading of the front shop zoning ordinance and also the massage order with zoning warrants. This is the second reading. I know we've talked about a couple months now. Do you have any questions?
Okay, number three.
No questions. The second reading of the home rule amendment. Anybody have any questions on that?
Okay, number four.
Alright, move on to number four. Options emergency wholesale water in...
Something, maybe you can move it.
No. Jordan and I had talked because our water rate from the county is at five dollars and five cents per thousand gallon. And last week we've been purchasing water from the county. So we discussed it. We kind of had a meeting with the city of Wynder. And they are willing to sell us some water because they just flushed out some waters that we could purchase from at our end. And we used to have a line that was connected to the end before. And I believe we still have it right now. So we are trying to negotiate to see if City of Wynder can give us a better rate than the county. And they have said that they will give us a better rate than the county. So, but I do not have actual figure yet.
Good question, Mike.
Well, my understanding, they met their council meeting was last week and they agreed to...
To work with us.
To work with us and to see if we would want to entertain this idea. So that's what we're here tonight to talk about. And then so long if we want to... Then they'll give them quotes, is that how it's right?
Yeah, they want us to put it on our agenda. So if you guys are okay to move forward, then you guys can authorize the mayor to authorize staff to negotiate their rates with them.
So the county's water comes from the Red Lord?
Yeah.
Wynder's water, where's its plan?
Just on...
They...
Right in Halloween. Maybe I stay on one plan.
And actually, they're hooking up with, making a deal with Auburn also. So they got the cord, is that...
Yeah, cord.
Up in Auburn. That's supposed to be good water for a beat gallons. And, but I mean, they won't produce that much, but they have access to a cord. But you don't have to do the cord. They ended up filling it up with Auburn and Wynder's. Auburn worked out eight years for me, probably get that done. Probably three really, but you got the others.
Okay, any other questions? Alright, number five, yeah, I believe, rights of top town enforcement. Number five.
Okay. Back in June, at our June council meeting, we discussed bringing the code enforcement in-house into our police department. I think this is the third time. This is the third time... This was the third time we talked about it in June. And now this is the fourth, the fourth time we're bringing it up and talking about it. We had a motion in June at our June council meeting to bring code enforcement in-house. And the motion failed two to three. And I thought we were, you know, I thought we were done with code enforcement. I thought that would be the end of it until I picked up the newspaper. And I saw that we had an ad in the paper for the code enforcement slash police officer. And it, you know, specifically spelled out the qualifications that, you know, what a code enforcement officer does. And, you know, I really felt kind of betrayed as a council member that the mayor went behind the city council's back to do, to get code enforcement brought in-house after the council had voted to not do that. Now, I understand that you're, that you're well within your rights to hire and fire and do, do with as you, as you wish, you know, with hiring and firing. But I think what's happening here is we're, you know, we're back channeling and circumventing the democratic process that all of the citizens in this town are due. And I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair to the citizens. I don't think it's fair to the council members that didn't vote for it. And I don't think, I don't think it's fair at all. And I don't agree with it at all. Now...
Let me, let me back you up, Mr. Williams. If you listen to cost on that, what they charging us, you won't see that.
Okay. Well, Bureau Veritas fell well within, well within their budget. And that was one of the, that was one of the things that we agreed to when Michelle brought them here was that there were going to be $25,000. And they came according to the accounting data in the budget. They're well within, they're, they're operating well and they're operating well within their budget. So I don't see, I don't see any reason why we keep having to go round and round and round with bringing the code enforcement into the city or the police department. And, you know, it's just, it's just not fair. That's the bottom of my, it's just not fair. And on the other end of it, there's no code enforcement officer that wants to do police work. And there's no police officer that wants to do code enforcement work because of the particulars that are defined in each job. So I don't think anybody's, I don't think anybody has answered the ad. And maybe they won't, I don't understand. But what I don't understand is during, when we passed our home rule amendment, you said whatever the council votes on is fine with you and you didn't care. And, and the council runs the city and that you didn't care. And now I'm taking you for your word at that. And it looks like that you're taking your will and imposing it on the people. It's not okay.
Well, you're getting changed to voting again.
Well, I think, I think we need to spell out more specifically at, at the council meeting, not to bring the code enforcement in-house, but to retain the services of Bureau Veritas.
Well, let me, well, I knew I was opposed to what you're saying at that point in time. But I don't think, I think maybe what you're saying, I don't think we all live to, to Bureau Veritas. I think maybe contract labor. But if we're not satisfied, or if you're, you know, as a council, we still have option to get other contractors, companies if that's out there, if it's working. But I mean, that's by...
There's only two of us up here that are dissatisfied with Bureau Veritas. I've talked to them extensively about, about their program, about their plan. And what they can do is that they can actually work with the city on, on getting, getting both of them to be cost effective. For instance, if, if a job site is, has trash or whatever, they write a ticket and the, the actual fine could go to support code enforcement from, from the inspection department. So I think Bureau Veritas is doing a great job. I think, I think the city council's decision to not bring code enforcement in-house needs to stand. And I also think that there ought to be another item on the agenda for Tuesday night's voting session to retain the services of Bureau Veritas. And let our decision stand for the people.
Okay. Okay.
Alright, move on to number six. RFP for audit services. We ran the RFP for audit services for fiscal year seventeen audit. To be, to be performed, we have two proposals that were submitted to us. And you guys have a copy of it. One is from Bates and Carter and the other one is from Rushton and Company. You see the prices for Bates and Carter is at $12,950 to perform the audit for fiscal year seventeen. They also gave us proposals to do the next two years, fiscal year eighteen and nineteen at the same price. They are located out in Gatesville, in Gatesville. And they come on site to do all the field work and also what they need from us. And they are, this one is willing to do one year to see how we like our services first. And if we do, then we can, you know, offer sign on for the next two years off. And their timeframe they have given us is between five to six months.
For what, for seventeen?
Just seventeen, yes.
Okay.
And then as soon as seventeen is done, they will pick up eighteen and nineteen if we, you know, choose them.
Alright, did y'all get references, references for these?
Yes. Kay and myself, we called some references. Kay called one company, I called the other one. And we both got good references, recommendations from other cities, counties that they do recommend both of these companies. Now Rushton and Company, their proposal came in at $18,000. And the difference is that they want to commit to a three-year audit instead of just doing a seventeen fiscal year something for us. They want, if they sign on with us or we choose them, they want to do seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, back to back. As soon as they finish seventeen, they're going to pick up eighteen and nineteen. Okay? And their timeframe is, say, they start in October, then they will probably complete it by January for seventeen. Okay? And out of all these years that they have performed, they only have one late middle that they have to expand. Do an extension for that city, what time they give you the name. But they all had, both these had good reviews from their references and the cities and counties that they worked with. So...
I have a question. There's a, there's a $6,000 difference between Rushton and Bates and Carter. Is, is the value there for that? Or is Bates and Carter a smaller outfit?
Bates and Carter is smaller farm. Rushton and Company, they're bigger, much bigger, they have more employees.
Okay.
So their rate is more, as you can see on the rates, is higher than Bates and Carter.
Were these the only two bills that came?
Yes, these are the only two that we got.
That we got?
Yes. So I mean, they both gave us a proposal. So if anyone of you guys would like to read over the book, I'd be happy to, you know, let you hang on and read it. So you can, you can sign when it's due soon. The only difference is that we sign over us and we have to do every year. And Bates and Carter, they offered to do one year at a time.
Bates and Carter, their price is just for the one year, right?
Yeah, for the one year and then on your back sheet, they offer proposals for the two years, but it's the same price.
I know, I know we had, we had the money in the budget because Hawkins and McNair could not, they couldn't do it. So I know we have the money in the budget for it.
Yes, we have the money in the budget. The money is in the budget. So our money is in the budget and we decide which one we would like to go with. Any more questions? Let's move on to number...
I have another quick question. Did we get everything we need from Hawkins and McNair?
Yes, they returned everything back and they submitted.
To do, to do these offers? Because I know, didn't we give them...
Yeah, we got all the stuff back from sixteen that they finished.
Okay. Now I'm talking about, did they have any of the material that they need for seventeen?
No, we didn't.
No.
We didn't have any.
We didn't give it to them yet.
Okay, good.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're done with Hawkins and McNair.
Yeah, I mean, it's been taken care of. I mean, well, we had to get our certification from state, but, I mean, but...
But whichever, yeah, whichever one we decide with, they may have to contact them for, you know, some stuff.
But they...
Information.
Well, they were willing to work with...
Yeah, I can see.
Pretty much, pretty tapped in, but...
Okay. Next, we have Jackson County amendment with more detail. I know Sam got an unqualified vote.
We reached out, uh, me and Sam can take the difference in inmate. Boy, we might get a better crew of Jackson County. Can I go ahead?
A year and a half ago, we kind of reached out to Jackson County and it's supposed to be more. And at that time, the guard from me and the inmate crew was fifty-seven thousand and forty-three dollars per year for a contract full year. They supplied the, the guard, we supplied the usual van and the usual equipment and so forth. They bring the inmate crew. I think if we get a better quality guard, a better quality inmates, we have to have it going since Davidson. And the Collins, we do Collins before now. We have suffered through, through this. Right now, we don't have, we've got a guard replacement, but he isn't cutting mustard. And I've been people around town and spoke to him, but he's not, he's not responding like, like he should. And that's what we've had, I'm going to request him today to have him licensed. And we'll see how that goes.
I have a question. Now, I wasn't on council then, but didn't we use Jackson County a few years back? Never used it.
Yeah, it was, it was called some council then.
But it was, they came out of Jackson County. Is that not correct?
Yeah. Proof that they shut down back then. That's the Collins, Collins area. And they're two unsupervised, good crew. I don't think they do that anymore with unsupervised.
Well, I mean, we just got, like you said, we just got a new guard and just been two weeks in here.
First couple days, he was okay.
Okay. I was, well, I was downtown early, early one morning. I just happened to be here when, when the guard let prisoners out. He let prisoners out and they, one went that way, one went that way, one went the other way. They shook their uniforms off. They do their best to change their appearance so they don't look like prisoners. And they run around, they ran around town bumming cigarettes. I mean, it, it was bad. I had a word with the guard and told him that he needed to reel in his inmates. And he was, he assured me that, you know, that he would do a better job. And I came back and he's still, he's still not where, that we cannot, we cannot deal with. It's a, it's a huge liability to me to have, you know...
You to have, you for that?
To have inmates out of control in the city.
Right now, we're paying roughly $40,000 for what we're getting for inmates we're using as guards. Uh, is that correct?
Yeah, at Buford.
At Buford. And it seems like, well, we just don't get, I, I felt the whole time in the last year, we have not got quality work out of the group. Uh, the guard, if he's sick that day, we don't get one, we don't get extra money. I mean, we don't get reimbursed. I just feel, I mean, I know seventy thousand dollars sound like a lot, but, you know, sometimes you get what you pay for. And I, I've been dissatisfied last year. Alex here playing, uh, down by the side, did our flowers. Three weeks later, they went right out there and she spent X amount of dollars. And it was her money, but it was for us to make the city look better. And they go out there weeding, they tell them weeding around the, the bridge. They weeding their flowers out there. Alex was a little upset, I do believe.
Sisters too, apparently.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I'm just saying, sometimes the supervision, uh, the guy that was actually a supervisor right now for them, he was a, a county manager a year ago and was looking for work in the latest guard job. Actually, I went and talked to him, just telling him about what he was doing. So, yeah, I mean, I know it sounds like if you didn't know what we're paying, it is about around seventy thousand dollar increase. But we get an extra day, says here, possibly extra prison, one extra man. So the money will, I mean, it'll be, I think it's worth it.
Yeah, that'd be working five days, if you're still at four days.
Five or six inmates?
Yeah.
Five, usually five, but I mean, that's up to what time, what we end up working out. But anyway, that's my, I just feel...
They had an increase from last year. It's about fifty-eight thousand seven hundred fifty-four, which is an increase of sixteen hundred eighty-one dollars. But if it's on contract with them tomorrow, it's going to take sixty days for them to get a guard in place. Plus, they gave us the option to hire our own man and put him through the training. We pay him on what salary we need necessarily.
So realistic, the guard, we already paid for the guard and then we got all equipment and everything. Now they take the pay at home, is that mine?
Take it to the prison.
I mean, I mean, back to where they're...
Hire your own guard, you would take him to the prison and drive him back.
And they fix it up every morning?
Where it is, okay.
Uh, I mean, I...
But we, we never going to know until we try, you know, like...
Well, I've been dissatisfied, I'll say it.
Okay. The first impression we got from the new guard, we thought he talked like a good game, but he proved his actions and he wasn't changing after knocking him several times. He's not...
Can we request another guard from the prison or is it, is it just get worse from there?
I did today.
You did?
Yeah. And I sent a copy to Monica.
Okay.
And, but that was the field operation, recent fields of operation. And we'll see what the response is.
I, I think, I think we get extra time, extra days, an extra hour during the day. So I think, personally, I think it's worth it to give it a try. If it done work, we can always send in a notice of dismissing it.
Option is we do it on board. If for some reason he doesn't work out and quits, we're kind of stuck with doing the process all over again. Probably best to let them support a doctor guard. If something happens to them, they're probably, they're kind of responsible. They got a contract.
Of course, we got a contract, yes, they have a, a, a deal.
So that's where we're at right now. We're just, we got a sticker here, some contract.
We'll discuss and talk about what we want to do much Tuesday night.
Late tonight.
Alright.
Okay, and I have number eight. They stated they don't have enough information paperwork that they need to submit. So they're going to move to next month's agenda. Okay, so we're going to number nine. And Joe Piper, please, you'll talk back, Joe. Code enforcement assistance, stress.
Can you hear me okay? You got your phone? And I don't know if they can... And anyway, I'm Joe Piper. I live at four five nine Cali lane here in Statham. I've been a citizen here for a little over three years. And I've attended quite a few of these meetings, not as many as I would like to, but I think that will change. As a citizen, I'm a little disappointed and definitely betrayed. On June thirteenth, I'm backing up, this was decided to go with Bureau Veritas. Back when Michelle was here and everybody considered it. On June thirteenth, Mr. Jackson brought it up and had voiced his concerns and his dislike about the present code enforcement from a personal standpoint. And it was brought up for a vote on June eighteenth and it was voted down by the council three to two. And then there was a newspaper article, July the twenty-fourth, that they have an advertisement to hire someone to replace Bureau Veritas. So as a citizen, we trusted that the council had decided on one thing and that it was a done deal. It was over with, we move on. And then we find out through the newspaper that that's not the case. And I feel that this undermines the citizen's trust. I was brought up to believe that like back in Thomas Jefferson's day and many before him, that, you know, government was for the people, by the people. And decisions made by this council and by the present mayor should be done from the standpoint that whatever you decide, you have to live with when you're no longer in office. We have to live with that decision while you're in office. And for us as citizens, the... And for us as citizens to believe that our council and our mayor has done what is best for the citizens and the city of Salem. And then to undermine that trust and that decision, then we wonder what else has been done in the past and what might be done in the future that is not in our best interest. And that is where my mistrust is, that's where my heart is. I moved to Salem because I felt loved in this town, and I plan to stay here for quite a long time. So, I'm hoping that this is put behind us and it's done the way that it should be done, allow Bureau Veritas to do their job, allow them, at least, I would think, maybe a two or three more year. And at that point, if they're gouging us on price, we can, we can address that as a council, or I should say, you all could address that and say, wait a minute, this is not what we agreed to. Why are the changes, why are these expenses there? And give them the opportunity as a business to explain why. The personal part has to be removed. Because whether you're a child growing up and your parents make a decision and you don't agree with it, well, there are reasons they make those decisions. But when you get older, you realize why they make those kind of decisions. But we're all adults here, and so, we're not children, we are citizens. And I think the citizens should be aware of what's going on and trust that when the decision is made, that we stand behind that and stick with it. And then if any changes are being made, I think that they need to be aware of why the decisions are being made prior to and not railroaded down everyone's throat, whether they like it or not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.